You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Swansea.
October 12th, here at Whitcomb Hall. I'll begin with a roll call.
Reporting in progress.
Scott So, that's me, I'm here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Select Ms. Rep. Ken Colby.
Not here.
Alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Michael Scunche alternate and Brian Vertigal alternate. And we have a full board, so we will not be seating Steve again, but nice of you to come anyway. So, on the agenda this evening, under applications and public hearings, planning board number 23-020, that's a site plan review, it's continued from, uh, if public hearing is continued from September 14th, that's Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C, on behalf of All Purpose Storage, Swansea West LLC, requests site plan review for construction of a multi-tenant services facility to be leased to various service businesses at 115 Base Hill Road. Subject property is currently at, shown at tax map 52, lot 16, in the rural ag district and the business district. Number two, which is planning board number 23-024, that's a site plan review, it's a continued public hearing from September 28th. Brickstone Land Use Consultants, L L C, requests a site plan review on behalf of M A R A Properties, L L C, to construct a 14,000 square foot addition to their manufacturing facility shown at tax map 72, lot 98-2, at 735 West Swansea Road. Subject property is located in the business and residential districts. Number three, site plan modification. Site plan modification application submitted by Frog Brewing Company, L L C, more property located at 580 Soares Crossing Road. Site plan modification application is to amend the previously approved site plan application to include function hall as an allowable use. Subject property is shown at tax map 56, lot 3, and is located in the business district. Under discussions and other business, unless there's four season notice of decision review, zoning and solar, uh, and solar update, and letter of support, M A S T grant, and any other business as may be required. Moving back to the top, um, we will do the minutes of September 28th. Motion to approve the minutes of September 28th. Do I hear? Motion by Richard Lane to approve the minutes of September 28th. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Brandon Self. Is there any further discussion on changes or say, or anything like that? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And those are done. Regional impact, most of the stuff on here, except Frog Brewing, has been on a previous meeting, so it's a new item, so regional impact vote would be required. Who wants to make the vote that we do not, or nothing on tonight's agenda would require us to notify the surrounding town?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, uh, is there any, I mean, a second, not a second? Second by Jane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Getting to the first, which is a planning board number 23-020, that's the turmoil. The applicant has asked us to continue it until October 26th meeting, so if no one has any objection, we need a motion for that.
You mean 115 Base Hill?
Oh, that what we're talking about? Oh yeah, 115, yeah, Base Hill Road, thank you.
I think there's the turmoil, I hope people.
I think so, yeah. Probably just jumped out of a terror. That's right, yeah. The Base Hill Road, correct. So, a motion by Richard Lane to continue that public hearing until October 26th, and second by you, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Mike, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Who was the second?
It was Michael York.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item B, planning board number 23-024, and that is a continued public hearing for Brickstone Land Use Consultants, requests a site plan review on behalf of M A R A Properties, L L C, to construct a 14,000 square foot addition to their manufacturing facility shown at tax map 72, lot 98-2, 735 West Swansea Road. And that is the turmoil right now. So, you're up, Mr. Pepperd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jane Pepperd. On behalf of turmoil, I'm the Brickstone Land Use Consultants. At the last meeting, there were several comments from the board, that the board felt maybe they'd ask for food to fill, for the time of people on our site. So I've submitted revised drawing, we have colored copies on the table in front of me, it's also on the board. You should be able to notice that we did add the 10-foot landscape strip across the front of the building. And the landscaping will contain a mix of plants, hydrangeas, rugosa roses, and junipers, so that'll provide foliage, basically years on those pieces. And we also labeled the six parking spaces at the west end of the parking lot as future parking spaces, we don't leave them initially, but we'd like to identify them on the plan, so we can have in the future, as they hire new employees. I also contacted the public works department about the sewer size and connection, and we agreed to change the sewer size to four-inch sewer, so it can tie directly into the main that's existing in Perry Lane. And they indicated they would accept it, so I hope that's satisfactory to the board. We also added a note on the drawing identifying where a new overhead door would be added in the west end of the existing building. Those questions for the board, if we need to clarify, yes, that'll take place. So those are the four changes that we made on the plan, that the recommendations of the board, so I hope you'll find that satisfactory.
Thank you.
Where exactly is that door going to be? You've got a, a nice note saying it's going to be there, but where is it on?
Yeah, it'll be right by the opposite, the new door on this building, so a fork could draw it back and forth.
That should be shown.
It should be shown what?
It should be shown on your building, where exactly that's going to be on?
Well, the arrow's pointing exactly where it's going to be.
It's pointing, you know, right there at the building adjacent from the other one, I don't know if the planning board really needs to see that right there. You know what it's for, we know where it's going there, and it's on the existing building.
This is the arrow. I didn't see the arrow.
But you had it on the new building, you have indicated.
Yep, there's a overhead door on the new building, and it has a new overhead door to be added to the existing building right there, and so there's only a certain amount of space they can put it in, you know?
Why not just put two hash marks on it, indicate where it is, so it's actually, well, you know, make the proper flag? I mean, it's, I know it's Mickey Mouse to a degree, but let's have it the way it's supposed to be.
It kind of is, but it doesn't really bring up any, uh, site plan issue.
Circulation.
If that door is over by the shed, or over by the corner, or right directly across it.
We're supposed to look at circulation, I think that's, that's probably what you're thinking about, right? How?
So, so how would it impact circulation if the door is moved, let's say it's there We have to make and put exactly where it is. Right on you, I think, sitting there.
You need to come to me and hand it to me.
I see why not, I mean, how hard is it?
Yes, Jane?
I would, I would think that...
So what difference does it make if the door is six feet wide, or if it's a four? What difference does it make if a burn's happened to that door? It's not a requirement of the site plan, like we're even after it. Like it's a fire act or something like that, that it has to be on there, you have to show exactly where it is, you know, for the site plan. If we get building plans, yeah, we, go ahead.
Just a question. Would it be appropriate for the planning board to allow staff to approve it administratively?
Oh yeah, we can do it.
Add it to the plan, other than being delayed for the next meeting, and then coming back again, I don't object to adding it on the plan.
Yeah, it can be a condition, for sure, and if the board wants it to be a condition, then it can be a condition, and that's up to whoever makes the motion. Let's see, what else on there? What else are we doing? The door, that'll probably be a condition on there. If you make a motion, then it is added in as a condition, is that okay?
At what point? Do I make a motion now, or?
No, we aren't, didn't discuss any of that. And when I close the public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
But we're just discussing everything else in there, or that we haven't gotten to. They've put in everything that we asked them to from last week. There's one thing about the, you've got the water supply, you've got a two-inch line from West Swansea Water Company over here.
Yes.
And you have an existing well on there, so it's my understanding that, and you're gonna have to check with West Swansea Water Company, that when Avenue went on and they did the engineering study on that, they are at capacity, are very near capacity for West Swansea, so they may not allow you to hook up on that. So if you do, keep it in mind that.
Yeah, we will be doing that, if that's the case.
You'll be hooking up to your existing well.
I did speak to the Brown family.
Oh, you did, yeah.
And, I mean, worst case, we would modify our plan, come back to the board, and either add a second well, or add a connection into the existing. Existing well is adequate to serve both buildings, and the use is only for domestic use, for the bathrooms, it's really not used in their processing systems, so it's, we're not a heavy water user at all.
And it's not using fire protection either, because you've got the cistern over there.
Right.
So, I don't know, I wouldn't think it's a wasted trip to come back to the planning board, just if West Swansea Water Company doesn't let them hook up, and they want to hook up to their existing well. I don't know, the board wants to handle that, but I would say it's...
I mean, if that can be a condition as well, and I'll...
It could just be in there.
Identify the final result, so you have it in your records.
If West Swansea Water is at capacity and you can't hook up there, then you will hook up to existing well.
That's correct.
Leave it at that. I think this was it.
Here's a, a point that's raised on page five in the, um, the staff review of this, that has to do with, it's the last sentence is, the board should consider whether they'd like to see landscaping along Route 10 or Perry Lane, the idea being, what's the front of the building? I don't, did we resolve that?
They said the front was Perry Lane side. They were, they were looking at it as the front of their building, so that's where it's going.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything else? Anybody from the public want to speak on this issue? Nope? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we won't be taking any more comments when I do, so now's your chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board will deliberate. So let's see. We have a condition on there? I'm just looking at the permits that they had there, but we had a condition. Looking for the permits that they needed. Oh, there they are. So, we discussed the conditions or permits that they needed, and that was the EPA Stormwater Pollution Prevention, N H D E S sewer connection permit, Town of Swansea Sewer Connection Permit, Town of Swansea Driveway Permit, and all other state and federal permits as required. So those can be in the condition, list of conditions, as we typically do, and of course, inspection by the fire department and sign off by code enforcement. And added to those would be, if the board wants to put a placement of where that exterior overhead door is on the existing building, and also a condition that would say if the West Swansea Water Company does not allow them to hook up to their system, then they will be hooking up to their own well on site. Exterior storage as well? Exterior storage for what? Restriction in exterior storage. Also, like in the internal. Okay, I don't know. It was last week, it was the last meeting. They had said it was...
It was represented to us, that everything would be on site.
Yeah, so no exterior storage would be a condition. Okay, so those are the conditions I can think of. Anybody else? We already did the door on there. Anybody else? So if not, then a motion is in order. Motion to approve, it's to approve with those conditions that I read out there on Beverly. Did you get all those conditions, or should?
I don't remember if it's all listed.
I'll just run down the list if someone makes a motion.
Okay.
Richard, go ahead, Richard.
I was gonna say, make a motion that is accepted with conditions.
To approve with the conditions that we just went over.
Discuss.
Okay.
My attorney goes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Michael York. Okay, the motion was by Richard Lane to approve with the following conditions, would be no exterior storage to be allowed on the lot, they're moving it on the side, EPA Stormwater Pollution Prevention Permit, N H D E S Sewer Connection Permit.
You're way too fast.
Sorry, sorry.
EPA Storm...
Stormwater Pollution Prevention Permit.
Okay.
N H D E S Sewer Connection Permit.
D E S?
D E S, yep.
Sewer?
Connection Permit.
Got it.
Town of Swansea Sewer Connection Permit.
Okay.
And the Town of Swansea Driveway Permit. And all local, state, and federal permits as required. Should cover any ones that we forgot.
Okay, got it.
And the location of the overhead door that is gonna be cut into the existing building. Okay, the location of the overhead door in the existing building.
Yep.
And what else?
To be, to be placed on the flat?
Place on the...
Be shown on the flat.
Yeah, pardon me?
Location, size.
Location and size.
Size and...
Yeah, imagine if they've got it located, they'll, they'll have to put the size down for the scale, but, yeah, that's fine. What else was there?
Plan a by fire department, on code enforcement.
Yeah. Plan a by fire department. Oh yeah, those were doing it, that's right. That was the last one I was thinking of. And the exterior storage. All right, I'll start off with that. We have that, okay. Again, so the last one is, is, I don't know, worded, so it's not over long, but if they can't hook to the West Swansea Water Company system, then they will be using their on-site well, I guess that would be... And that should do it, for the conditions, I think. So, all those in favor of approving the plan with those conditions, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and approve with those conditions, so those are administrative, and you come into the zoning office and go sign off on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number C, which this one's a site plan modification, and that's the, submitted by Frog Brewing Company, L L C, for property located at 580 Soares Crossing Road. Site plan modification application is to amend the previously approved site plan application to include function hall as an allowable use. Property shown at tax map 56, lot 3, is located in business district. And I will open the public hearing, and, right up, you know, what are you doing? Okay, he's brought the drawing as well. Yep, have a little peek at that.
So this is the original site plan, we have, we have 25, uh, parking space, and, uh...
Stepping out.
Right now, because of those, generally, we only have two large events a year, our anniversary, for our brewery, and we do a parrot show, that's, uh, that's a best of the American Cancer Society. So, uh, right, right, right now, we're getting a little bit more demand for weddings, some live events, where we would probably have 100 or 120 people on a, on a regular, regular basis. So our first thought was, right now, I have a temporary, from the state and the, the state wants us to have like a temporary fence line here, which we did with chain and, and concrete posts, which is movable. This, this parking area is a little bit larger than, than what we need for a regular-sized parking lot, so I can move that a little bit and gain a row of parking, and then park. I could, we have 25, I think in the field adjacent right here, we could do another 42 on a temporary basis and park 67 cars. Anything larger than that, we would, we would probably bump in from a different location.
That's the thing the planning board wants to talk to you about, parking, because it has been an issue, I guess, in that area, people parking in different locations over there rather than your local.
Yes.
So that's what you do about it. What was the temporary fence? Uh, the state made you put that up because of?
This is just because, like, we opened up a, our whole area for, for alcohol consumption, so they don't want, we don't allow people to go in the parking area.
Oh, that was due to that part of the state? It wasn't D E S, it was something else?
Yeah, it was, it was electric commission.
I got you.
Same, like, just signage, it says no alcohol beyond this point.
So that, that's what you do, you put the excess cars out on the field to remove enough of that change?
Yeah, I can move this up and almost gain another row of parking, and then we'll, we'd do another row, and so we, we could park 67 cars, which...
And there, and you have how many in your parking lot now? I can't read it from here, but...
It's 25.
25.
Two, two of them, yeah.
So, you have quite a few cars, cars there. And the function hall part of it is just pointed out on the plan?
And, well, in the brewery, we, the brewery staff room, and then we have a covered patio that's 36 by 40.
So, questions from anybody?
You gotta have some way to communicate to your patrons that they can't park right along Soares Crossing Road, that the state...
Yeah, well, during an event, we would, we would do signage.
Right.
No parking on the road, yeah.
You know, because I went by there, and I was amazed that they're even on route.
Well, when we had the, we didn't know the car show was, obviously...
Yeah, those draw bigger out there.
Yeah, I would say that was a benefit for the American Cancer Society, and we didn't know it was gonna be like that, and, but...
Yeah, I see, I see you guys got a good start, and I just didn't want to see again some kind of legal troubles, because...
Absolutely.
You are responsible for your patrons when they're visiting your facilities, so...
Correct, yeah. So how far, how far down the street here, would you possibly be parking?
Well, uh, this is the existing tree line, so we would, we would move this temporary fencing that I have here up, and have another row here, and then another row, and then another row on a temporary basis. This is like, uh, maybe 150 feet.
Looking at, saying setback across here.
That's the...
Encroaching to that is a problem.
Which setback are you talking about, what is it?
Well, setback for the...
I believe that is the...
That's the, uh...
So, oh, that's a 275, is it?
Yeah.
That's what that is, right?
Yeah.
So you're gonna be encroaching into that.
Yeah, but there's not building anything on it.
No. It's a temporary, it's a temporary, a temporary basis, only when that particular event, which may or may not happen, happens, like if you have one wedding a year, or...
And you're not paving anything, right?
You know, we, we couldn't, we didn't, we, we didn't, we did the impervial surface, surface stuff here, get the fabric and everything in the parking lot.
When you say joker, you mean as needed?
Correct.
When you have it...
Not on a full-time basis.
During go events, during, like, that, just normal operation, will be a way to seal off the grass area block.
That's what we have now, we have temporary chain link, not chain link, but a chain with concrete posts through there, so that it's separated out.
But I guess no one else is here really to talk to this, other than the board members here then? Anybody else have any questions on that?
Nope.
Seems pretty straightforward and planned out. No? And it's good that your business is taking off like that, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't realize in the beginning the demand for, you know...
We're a little bit more visible there than you were in Marlboro.
Absolutely, yeah, but I think it's more of like, people, oh, it's a nice space, we could have a Christmas party here, or, you know, we could have a reception here, something like that, which wasn't in our original plan, but it is, it is now...
Not yet.
Not yet.
Anybody, anybody else? Jane, you had something?
Right, so you would only be using this during the season when you didn't have to plow snow, or something?
Yes, most likely, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we'd encroach on that. I wouldn't plow the grass off, I like my grass.
Right, yes, that's good.
I don't like driving on...
Anybody else have any questions on this?
Yeah, so you say signage, I mean, I, I like this, I want to see you succeed, and I'm wondering, you say you would have signage on Soares Crossing Road, or I'm assuming that you would, that's, how would you manage that?
On the day, on the event, day, if we knew, if we thought it would be, uh, an issue, we thought it was a live event, we would definitely put signage along, along the roadway.
Along your frontage?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the soil, I mean, just pray that it's not gonna be rain, right? Mucky muck?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an established field for over 100 years, and it's grass, but I mean, obviously, if it was, uh, some sort of downpour, then we wouldn't do it, you don't even know.
They get...
I wouldn't want the damage to the, to the area myself, so...
Yeah, but you have to pick, pick...
It's been a long time, it's not boggy at all.
Right. I, I like mowing a lawn.
It's near the river, but it's not boggy.
No, but it's also, I don't know if you're familiar with the property, it's, it's about a 70-foot elevation drop, very steep going down the river.
So, does it make sense, I know this will be in the minutes, does it make sense to attach this information? How will we attach this information to the site plan?
Yeah, so what we'll do is, I will amend the notice of decision to say, to change the use, and we'll also specify in the notice of decision that this parking space is located behind, behind the structure, are temporary. I think it's also important for us to know as well that that is D E S governs that, that section, that setback, and so if they have any concerns, ultimately, just proceed us. So as long as you know, that board knows that, if they have any issues, they'll let you know.
Anybody else have anything else? Then I will close the public hearing. So, again, looks pretty straightforward, planned out, he's got a plan to do, and knows how he's gonna handle it, so, I don't see a reason why he had function halls and added use to that problem. Anyone else, and a motion would be in?
I'll move that we approved, uh, function hall, yes.
Motion by Mike, that he, that we amend his site plan to include function halls. Is there a second? Also, I think it's taken my brain itself, is there any...
Yeah, just, so if this doesn't work, right, so how will we, you'll know it's not working, you'll come back, we'll know it's not working.
Somebody, I mean, people driving by, or whatever, there was a question about it before, driving by that there was a parking problem, and if the police department sees a parking problem, they'll let a hole, whether it be a selectman, or the planning board, or something like that.
The police officer can go by, he can tow anything that's traffic has.
And we can send a message.
We don't want that, okay.
But that's, that's how it would be handled, you know, code enforcement or the police?
The whole idea is, is, is...
Right.
The other part of that as well is, is they, they've worked to solidify that, you know, there isn't going to be parking off-site. If they need to have sufficient, you know, additional parking, they'll either bus in and find alternative routes. Really, the point of doing this in minutes so that they can actually hold these events internally, they don't need any special events permit, every time they, they come in, they want to break something like this.
Right. If you only get six a year.
Yep.
For instance...
There's a motion on the floor, and we're discussing it, deliberating to see whether we're gonna pass it or not, or vote on it, yes or no, or so...
I just had a question for him. If he has another car show, didn't you have the cars parked on that?
We did it.
Yeah, so I think you mentioned to me that day that you might have to do... Yeah, so, I think you mentioned to me that day that you might have to do something about parking and maybe you would have to bus people from a lot somewhere else. Yeah, so he wouldn't.
Imagine that tonight.
And, and so he will not be parking them along the road.
Right.
Or over at the oil company unless they'd say to. Yeah, and he runs a good-looking place, I'd just like to add.
Will you ever get any questions from?
Well, no, you can make a deal with Nick's Restaurant or Cabalos, you know, if you make a deal with them, it's like.
I'll rent him some.
It'll be a legal parking spot.
He can park him in my front.
There you go, you got all kinds of.
There you go.
Five bucks.
There you go.
We took that.
That's not for the minutes.
Yeah, but you'll charge him a hundred dollars a car.
Any further relevant discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? Okay, you have your modification, good luck to you. You're welcome. Good to hear, thank you.
Thank you.
See ya. So, let's see, we have discussions in other business, unless there's fourth season notice of decision review. So, this is, that plays out on Route Ten for the ground, has the.
Right there, right?
They've started.
Right on the corner of, what is it, West Sway Street Ten there?
So, I believe he's joined us via Zoom, said he wasn't able to come and visit with tonight, is he on, or chance, can you see him?
There's a phone number and Mark's.
Phone number, maybe?
He said Mark's.
Mark's, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's, there's two.
That's not him, yeah.
There's two, there's Mark's, Larry and somebody else, is he on? I don't know if he can hear us or not. Should be.
I can, I can hear you guys.
You can hear us, okay.
Yes, I can hear you as well.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So, the reason why I brought this to the planning board at the last meeting was that what Lesser had brought before, before Mike Jasmine, a concern that he had had about if you'd be able to utilize his lots during the construction process so that he can essentially, he's renting another location, he wants to move his equipment from the other location to there and that way he doesn't have to pay the rent and the mortgage on top of that, essentially, it's been detrimental to the business in that sense. And so, that question's kinda come to us and so the reason why we're inviting you here tonight is ultimately to give us a little bit of a, tell us exactly what you're planning on doing on that particular lot. You know, you talked about maybe finishing the landscaping and then doing, utilizing the space as a business while the structure is being built or in that process. So, I'm hoping you can maybe clarify a little bit of that for the board and we'll go from there.
Um, I do.
Yeah, sure, so, thank you, John. Basically, the whole idea today to operate out of there, like you guys are saying. We're a landscape company, we're not like a sales, where there's a showroom for, I mean, we will eventually have that with the building, but as, as the way we're operating now, we're kind of on a landing, same situation, so the whole idea is to kind of save a little, unrent and be able to pay the mortgage and be able to operate out of there, obviously. Get the curb cuts in, get the drains shut, and, and be able to utilize that land during construction. The, the, the whole point of it is to, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to make it usable. Clean the street and such, and there's still construction, obviously, so there, we're gonna, you're planning on getting the curb cut in, that's kind of the start anyway, the curb cut in and you strip along and get your base material in there, build it up to grade. Level it all off, you get the drains in there, you get culver pipes, you get everything that's kind of specked out, as you guys know, in the plan there. My, my thought was to be able to use that land, the section of that land, you've gotta be able to use that property there. Section of that land to be able to maybe put a couple storage containers on, keep everything kind of neat and tidy, but be able to use that property.
Okay, so, I think when the planning board discussed it, when we gave your approval, the planning board said that all the site work had to be done before you started using the property. So, that sounds to me like that's what you're planning to do, the site work meaning the removal of the topsoil, the gravel you're gonna add to, for parking areas, drainage, like you said, curb cuts in, like you said. Is that what you're considering, site work, and you're considering doing the site work?
Yeah.
And having that done prior to?
That's exact.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's exactly what I, what I was looking for and that's kind of what I thought we had just agreed on.
Yep.
But there was a little communication or miscommunication between Mike Jasmine and I. So, we just kind of wanted to clarify, I think, yeah, that's the plan, it's a kind of, it's the, the bulk of the site work, all of it up to grade, I mean, we're gonna be, the building's going in next year. But basically, curb cuts, drainage, I mean, drainage is the most important part, you get all, you start with the bottom up and build up essentially, it's not like we're gonna be kind of backtracking. Drainage is a huge, huge part of this project because as you know, it's, it is a little led over there, so, get the retention pond in, get the culver in, get all the drains done, get everything up to grade, and, and go from there. I don't wanna backtrack though, where I don't wanna grab the entire site and then have to dig it all up where the building's going. So, I was more or less planning on just doing a, a, a base, a base product for the finished areas where they're gonna be, where it's essentially a ton of material bins there, hard pack and then where it's gonna be paved. I think we've gotta dig kind of you, if you will, that was all gonna get finished, as, as finished as you possibly can without redoing it, if that makes sense.
So, you'd be doing your paving after you put the building up, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes, the paving will be done after the building's up because we'll have trucks coming in.
Right.
We'll have machines running around, but there's no point in paying for asphalt, so I, I wish I could afford that, but it's not gonna be feasible to do that, so.
So, are you still planning on the apartments?
Yeah, 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 sorry, when I say building, I, I consider it one, one, that's one essentially.
So, you may or may not have been in on the meeting before when we were discussing the prior applicant and the West Swansea Water Company has reached capacity and they may or may not, they may or may not let you hook up to that. Are you aware of that?
And that, that's okay, I was, I was kind of planning on having a well in there and a tailgate anyway. We are going to have, to have a water tank for the suppression systems around it. The engineer, the engineer is going to go through all of that and, and, but, but essentially, I was planning on putting a well in anyway. So, I think that's kind of what we agreed on with the, with the original plan group. We might need to put a well, I think that's kind of.
Yep, okay, good, yeah, just bringing it up because you, you are in their franchise area, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the board have any questions on what he plans to do there? It looks like he's gonna do the site work first, which is what we wanted him to do, get all the drainage and everything in so that the site works. Then he can move his storage, I guess, for mulch and various items he's gonna have in there and work off the site. And it sounds like he's planning to build a building next year, so, I think that's.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
It is difficult to hear on that.
Is the sewer and water for the apartments going to be in-ground already or is that going to be done later? I think he initially said all of them has to be completed.
If it were me, I would do it, but there's no reason, because it's done all the time, you dig a line and put a sewer line in or you dig a hole and put a, a water line in, but I don't know that he's gonna hook up to the Wat-, West Swansea Water Company, they'll probably have a well there. I think that's what he said he was planning on there, but I don't think it really is much difference to the planning board whether he, you know, he's not gonna pave until after the building's rough, but if he has hard pack and all that type of stuff down, then sometimes it's easier to do that and then you dig a trench, you put your sewer line in and you lay your, your water lines or electrical, what you're ever putting in afterwards. That's not a problem, to me anyway, I don't think so.
There's gonna be a private well, do we need to indicate that on the site plan, the location of that?
It may be there already, I recall, we don't have the plan here, but on recall.
There's not a well there, no.
No, I mean, I mean on the plan that is submitted to us, I don't recall whether there's one on there. No, but even, even so, yeah, they don't have to be indicated on there.
So, just FYI for him.
Yeah.
Should we require some sort of bond to make sure that this is completed?
No.
Rather than.
We, the planning board generally does that if the, the town is gonna be on the hook for something. We'll say a development is going in and you've got roads and infrastructure going in there, sidewalks, sewer lines and all that type of stuff and they get halfway in there and run out of money, that's when the town has a bond because then the town has to finish the darn thing off. But something like that, the town isn't gonna.
Just, they're only showing us approving that law and all.
So, no, in my opinion, no, I mean, that's, that's a board decision, obviously, but.
I don't think there's, there's one nature bond.
So, you know, we're, I guess, you're asking us just for a nod, a preliminary nod or something on what you're doing there? Because you said there was a discrimination or a difference of opinion between you and Mike Jasmine, the code enforcement officer, what was that difference in opinion?
I think the difference was just an understanding of essentially doing all the site work complete to a complete completion point and being able to operate out of there.
What was?
I think, I think the miscommunication was that we had to have the entire site building, pavement complete before we could operate out of there versus deadening drains, the curb cuts, the.
Okay, code, code.
Finished site rig.
Code enforcement thought that the building, that the planning board wanted the building up before you operated out of there, right? That's what his thought was?
That was my understanding, my.
Okay, okay.
I, I thought it was just to have all of the site work done, all the drainage and all of the water lines, et cetera, too.
Yeah.
Before they could.
It, you're right, it was, you're right, but, but Mike, he probably wasn't at the meeting there and he didn't want, he didn't wanna approve something when the planning board says, no, you're gonna have it this way and he didn't want to overstep his bounds, so that's why they're getting clarification from us. And you're right, yeah, we did say that all the site work, all the drainage, water lines, all that type of stuff had to be in there.
For the entire project.
For the project, yes.
What is the definition of complete?
No, we aren't talking about.
That's what he's, that's what he's telling.
No, that's not what it sounded like to me anyways, he's just getting clarification as to how far along they have to be before he can start moving his equipment on there and selling his mulch and stuff up there. And we discussed that at that meeting, as I recall, and it was that the site plan and the drainage has to be in there first, then, and the curb cuts, obviously, then he can still use it and the building can go up afterwards.
That constitute a substantial amount of completion? I mean, that, that term, because we use that term, or it's in our.
We do, and, and that's for extensions of, of site plan or approvals, those type, you know, extension of an approval. Generally, the planning board, if the site work is done, that's a substantial improvement to the property, is what we usually consider on this board. Have anybody? So, let's clarify it for him, the. Go ahead, Jane.
Why, why is there a memory stuck with me that we discuss, in discussion, it was mentioned that we did not want things stored and placed on the lot to be left until, until a building was erected? In the, in the fear that we didn't know how long it would be before a building would be erected. Just like, like the past one that just went through here, they've been storing things outside for some years and I'm delighted that they're building an extension and that won't be like that anymore. But that's what I understood at the first go-round, that this was to be completed to the point that we wouldn't see a lot of their business on that lot until they had their.
Oh, his, a lot of his business is stuff stored outside. I mean, those bins that, that they're gonna be taking mulch.
I know, and there's much too much of it along Route Ten now.
But we approved it for those. The site plan is approved with those outdoor storage bins, those, the building wasn't gonna be used to store all the mulch and stuff.
No, true, that's true.
It's gonna be along that, it's like the northerly, as I recall, the northerly section of that lot. And that's, that is part of the business that outdoor storage there.
So, so I, I, my recollection is that we were comfortable with the outdoor storage of materials, but I don't recall a discussion of all the trucks and equipment and trailers and, you know, is that part of this? Are we permitting this, those were going to be stored in the, in the building, was my understanding of the application.
I don't recall all the trucks stored in the building, I don't know, maybe.
He can tell us, I can.
I know there was.
Well, so, so in the, I'm sorry, excuse me, in, in the plan there, we have out back that parking lot, that's where.
Right.
Okay.
Material trailer storage is, so technically, not all of the trailers and trucks need to be stored in the building. The reason for the building is to store it, because it's. So, if there's stuff that's there outside, it's technically in that material storage area to part of that.
Yep.
Uh, plan.
That's why I recall it too. And that there was a substantial screening in the back of that property just for that purpose there. I think there's a, almost a berm, I think.
I also, I mean, keep, keep in mind too, the face of our company is building this property, so it's not gonna be a junkyard. I, we do very high-end work, we don't, we, we do, we attract a lot of fine clients and, and people visiting the site with materials, it's going to be clean. It's not a junkyard, like some other, other places that I mentioned, but it's a very.
Thank you.
Not money that I'm dumping into this building.
Yep.
It's going to be, it's going to be very, very nice, so I guess all I'm asking is to, in the time being, seeing now in the springtime when the concrete is in and building gets erected, to be able to just operate out of the, the land that we own to kind of load us through to what is loading.
Yep.
And then we can move inside. It's, it's not really, it's, it's not really huge, but it can be done in a worst-case scenario to stay where we're renting now and pay our mortgage and, look, et cetera, on, on the property, but it would be very nice if we could kind of just move over there, centralize and go from there.
Yep, we get you. Yep, that's understandable, running a business certainly is, so, let's see. Suppose we could either have a consensus or a motion, we can have a motion on this, that would clarify it, saying that.
I'm sorry, I was interrupting, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The only thing with the site work that will not be complete because it's not, I'm not, we're waiting for the, it's gonna take part in the concrete, is the electrical and the water and the sewer, it's not, it, it leaves even happening to the water on site, but that would be done on experience in the building. But every other, every part of the site and site work will be drainage ready.
Yep. That's generally what we consider site work is, is a drainage plan, curb cuts and sidewalks and roadways and things like that. So, okay, thanks for clarifying that. So, I think if we do it by motion, the motion should say that the, is to allow the applicant to start using his site commercially with the storage bins of mulch and stone and whatever else is gonna be stored on there after site work is completed, which means the drainage, all the drainage is done, hard pack, curb cuts, you know, driveway, hard pack and the curb cuts and just anything else that pertains to the site, site.
And consolidation of his equipment, of his trucks and trailers and it sounds like that's, they're, those will be all moved to this site at this point.
They will be, yeah, I would say, because he's renting another place.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so.
For convenience, all the groundwork has to be done.
Yeah, and then we generally consider that site, the groundwork site work, site work again is the drainage plan, they've gotta get the property to drain properly and they've got to have, I think there's going to be, I forget exactly how they're doing the drainage on that one, but anyways, all the drainage has to be completed and working, curb cuts has to be, have to be in and there has to be, the soil has to be removed and wherever they're putting building and driving on, it's gotta be hard pack or, or something gravel or something substantial like that to drive on. So, that's my opinion of site work, anybody else?
Does that, do you think that's gonna work for Mike?
Yeah, I, I think it's also important for us to emphasize as well that this still requires that the entire site plan application is finished within your process, just because that's the typical timeline.
That's all they have, yeah. That's all they have, yeah.
And if, if you run out of time in the process, you get to the year mark and you, and you can't complete, you can come back to us for an extension for the rest of the building, knowing that if it's not finished within that two-year period, uh, then, then ultimately, it, it can't be a scenario where he gets to continue with an unfinished site, unless he comes back and does a brand new site plan application.
Is that your start from now or from prior approval?
Prior approval.
Prior approval, first approval, yeah.
And administratively, he should come in, when he has determined the location of the well, should come in and.
Let's, yeah.
Let you know.
Yeah.
Yep, should be on the plan just for convenience, somebody looking around for a while, those things disappear pretty quickly.
Absolutely.
When on the plan, even over town, all on the plan.
I, I got one thing to ask the gentleman. Uh, I live not far from there, and the last couple of days, you've been having workmen are parking on the sidewalk, they can't park on the sidewalk, those are for pedestrians and there's a lot of them in that area, so if you could please just ask those workmen working on your site right now, not to park on the sidewalk.
Absolutely, I was aware that they are parking on the sidewalk, I thought they are parking in the lot, so, uh, I will, I will absolutely ask them not to park there.
Thank you.
So, getting back to the motion. Motion would be, I'll repeat it, um, that, um, after completion of all the site work, which includes the drainage plan, all the drainage working, and the, the curb cuts to the property and gravel or hard pack, whatever he's putting on there for, for driving on, then he will be able to start using it as.
Commercial?
Commercial, yeah, I guess, whatever, yeah, I guess that's considered commercial business, using it as his, his business, his storage part of it there, with the building to be completed next year.
So moved.
Motion by Michael Yorn.
Excuse me, before we put this second, do we advise, or Mike will be advised to check all that before they can start their commercial part?
Yeah, yeah, and he's doing his job because he checked with these guys here, you know, what they're doing now, that's what we're doing.
Make sure we don't have to.
Yep, he's not a, so do we have a second for the vote? Seconded by Richard Lane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I suppose. Okay, you continue your site work.
Michael, I know several times a day, so I'll let you know if it comes to junk camera quick.
And get it completed, and then you can move some of your storage bins on there and start using the property.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, guys, I'm very glad.
You too. Okay, zoning and solar update. Let's get on to the zoning here.
Yeah, I didn't see that in the pack.
It's like, uh, this portion has the.
Oh, okay.
And the next page has been.
Okay, so, no, I just get that, get that part.
We've got so many different copies of this, this thing floating around.
Could you do us a favor in the future, you like this one here?
Yep.
Sometimes you have projects that, that you shot on the backside after ending the other one, can you separate them a little bit?
Okay, yeah, but like, but like a page.
When I, when I get done with, this is my last page, I put it over here, then the next one starts, the next project.
Yep.
Just makes it a little easier.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, I understand.
I know we're trying to save trees, but I got a couple of solar.
What also gives you, I could put like a blank page and says zoning, and that way you know what part of the agenda it's on.
So a lot of this is, um, Village Business District One, and we went over all the permitted uses there that we're adding or picking out of that, but it still looks to me like the bed and breakfast facility was excluded from it, but we had had it on there with specific, with maximum, maximum occupancy when the planning board looked it over, I think we had that in there.
It was on there.
That's what I thought, so that needs to be put back in there, but again, there's so many different lists that we've got here, some of them are crossed off, some of them aren't crossed off, but it looked to me like that one was crossed off.
What, what do you mean?
It was, let me just find out, it was crossed out, and let's see. Business District One, it's a business. It's a duplication of that.
Yeah, so, so you can.
It does there, but no, I'm, I'm looking at what's actually in our zoning that's been crossed out, here it is, right here, see, it's in, uh, it's got hotel motel or bed and breakfast facility, that's crossed out, that's, that's not going to be in there, so we're going to, we're going to have the bed and breakfast in there.
Yep, stays, understood.
All right. Um, and also.
You got that's the phone?
Okay. In that very first part where we're talking about the description, Village Business District One, it says Village Business District One will extend along the western side of State Route 32, and it describes the entire district, well, we're, if we're going to do that, we're missing the Village Business District in West Swansea here, it goes up that side of Main Street and up there, so if that description is going to be in there, we have to have some sort of little paragraph in there that says, and also in West Swansea, uh, the, I think it's the south side of Main Street, and we'll have to see what properties are in there, but that's in the Village One as well, and the one property over there on what used to be Grove Street, I think it is, that's in, so it'll have to be in there. Okay, so we'll add that in there.
And, and also just grammar, it says that the district will extend, presumably this will occur, so it should just say that the district extends along the western side of level, you know, make it not be a future tense, but present tense.
Yeah, I'd say will and a lot extends. Yeah, if we can just use the S at the end of the verb rather than using the will or shall, because that'll give it the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, understood.
That's fine.
Is that the type of description that we're looking for? Because I was, I explicitly used map and lots, now granted, map and lots are changing right now, so.
Oh, yeah, well, that'll have to change with that then, will it? No, are these the new ones?
Yes, these ones, I believe are the new ones, two sixteen signs, right?
But that makes it helpful because sometimes you don't know where that line is on that, so it's, it's helpful, the more descriptive it is, descriptive it is, and yeah, along Main Street here, it's never really been described down, I think it shows it on the map, but it really doesn't describe this, what it is on Main Street.
Do you, do you want me to add a description to it that is very similar to this? I know what's currently proposed there is not necessarily that, but when we do the zoning amendment, we can amend it to include those parcels, or is that, that too far for what we want to try to do?
Go over there and you've blocked me someplace.
So I, this specific change, the zone ordinance, is tied to the parcels themselves. This one out there is not type of parcels, would you like me to?
To describe it as that, if we're going to describe it, we might as well describe it as this one is being described, if we're going to do a description of it, it might as well be like this one, so.
I think it's the type of this.
Do that and.
More accurate.
Yeah, you know what properties are in, what aren't in.
The, um, the wording, going back when we were saying will and shall, 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 is very restricted, very definitive.
Maybe too.
Legally, it's definitive, will is, is ambiguous, ambiguous.
We know what you mean. We know what you mean, Richard, so, so are you.
We, we should change will to shall, because the shall looks.
Or just take it off.
We're, Victoria proposed removing it entirely, so the wills will, will be removed and it will be, uh, like whatever the following verb is afterwards, we'll have an S to it.
Yeah, continues and.
Continue, shall, stands, or.
No, leaves those two out, I think that's correct.
This is just descriptive, it's not meant to be, I don't think it's at that level.
That's a better wording, like, yeah, so I agree with that.
I have a question about the off-street parking on the, the opposite page, because we've got that little box and it has the scheduled minimum parking requirements, um, so we tend to use a variety of descriptors for these different uses, you know, like, um, we've got wholesale warehousing or manufacturing facility, wholesale or manufacturing facility, just depending on which district we're in, and my instance is the bottommost one where it says retail sales. In other instances, we say retail sales colon services, and I wonder, first, if that's what we intend, if we intend to have that same kind of parking requirement for retail sales and colon services, um, and if so, why don't we put it there, add, add the word services?
Is parking one of the things we're changing in here? Or, I, because I don't even know where the heck you are on that.
Okay, just on the opposite page, we were looking at this block of text on the opposite page, there's this little box with the, the parking.
I'll see if I can find it. Okay, you've got it, thank you.
And, and what I'm thinking about is the, um, the facility that was continued at our meeting, uh, until the next meeting.
I don't think the services would fall into that, I think retail sales, because we're going by a square foot, right, two hundred fifty square feet, gross, gross floor area we're going by, and that is a retail sales where a bunch of people are going to be in there, you know, and, and looking at chairs or whatever the heck they're looking at. Services is, is a little bit different, whereas you don't have that many people in there, service businesses, you're providing a professional service or, or professional labor or expertise or something, and you wouldn't normally have that many people for square foot, in my opinion anyways, that's just me, so.
But just down the line, it would be so nice if we could make all these different uses consistent in their wording from zone to zone to zone, or district to district.
We'll see how we deal with the ZBA as to, you know, whether we want to straighten some of those out, see what happens there at that ZBA meeting, because they're going to go over services, you know, the attorney there is going to be discussing that at the ZBA, ZBA, it's their job to interpret our zoning ordinance as to what it means.
Okay, but, but, you know, I, that's a, for me, it's a larger issue. Because it's, it's throughout our entire ordinance, that we have a variety of descriptors depending on which district.
And it's just how the ordinance got, you know, it started off a couple of pages and then you, a little bit more and more, because we have, uh, again, like you're saying, retail sales, colon service, then we have, uh, retail businesses and service establishments, things like that, means the same thing, but we have it worded differently in different areas in there.
Right, right.
Always try to track the language.
Clear for me?
Track the language.
Track it?
Yeah, from one district to another.
Yep. Somebody on there?
Yes, it's hilarious.
Go ahead, you're on air.
I shall, I shall, um, on the Village Business District One, I did not see in the package, uh, anything but the thirty-five foot height limitation that we discussed the last meeting.
Yeah, it was there, but you're right, I don't know if it's there or not, but again, this, uh, it's a little hard to understand some of it, we've got a bunch of duplicate pages here and stuff, but I know you're right, that was in there, we had it in there, and we will.
Yes.
It was, it's like a thirty-five.
Yes, that's right.
It's not to be worded without.
There's.
So, just making notes, it's in there, okay, it's in there, Julius, it's in.
It's, you're correct, it's, it's not, but it didn't, this is the section we're supposed to.
Okay, so.
Maybe we need a clean.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to organize this.
Take, take, take this what we've got now, toss it on there, do a clean thing up to work from.
Yep.
Because everything gets, that's my problem with sometimes the way things, all these packets are lined up.
Yeah.
If one runs into the other.
Okay, anything else on that Village Business One, or that other zoning that we're looking at there? Nobody, anybody?
I, I think it's all in here, like I, like you said, it's not organized, but it's a building, you know, it's set up, it's a little big, um, and it would just be nice to see it written out, like the writing will actually exist and to make sure it's clean enough.
Yeah, and that's what we're doing here, that's why we haven't had public hearings yet on it, you know, we're just going over it, making sure that it's actually, is exactly what we want, and then we'll have a public hearing on it.
Thank you.
Does it go to legal before the public hearing?
Yes, yeah, I should have sent it out this last week, but whenever we sent it out to some guys, it was a little later than we wanted to, so.
And small things like that, like adding the thirty-five foot height thing there, even if it's not in there, legal, you know, we can still do that.
Yeah.
It's not a, a big deal.
Some of the things that are allowed by special exception are, I mean, a special exception is not always that hard to get.
We're still talking about, uh, Business and Village Business One?
Yes, Village Business One, existing uses.
So we're talking about accessory building, right, that's the special exception one we're talking about?
Well, should I be looking at Village Business One, yes, amended uses, okay, yeah. Yeah, okay, I'm all right with it, I was in the wrong column.
All right.
But it is something to think about, because special exceptions get us into a lot of trouble.
All right, so let's move on then to the solar update. Everybody have a copy of the, the draft of the solar update there?
Some weird.
And it's, uh, talks about the purpose of the ordinance, is to accommodate and encourage renewable energy systems and distribution and generation of resources in appropriate locations while protecting the public's health, safety, natural resources of the planet. So it's got accessory solar, a few different uses here, accessory solar, got small-scale enterprise solar, commercial solar, and industrial solar. So the accessory solar would be a, a single use, like on a residential home or a small business or something like that by the looks of it, and just on a small lot, and that wouldn't require a site plan review because lots of homes.
Well, we really don't have much control over residential.
We have no control over residential, not much about it, we have no control of it, as we should not have any control over. So, the second one is a small-scale enterprise solar, and that's a solar energy system that serves a group of local energy users situated on one or more separate lots, which are not necessarily contiguous, users are, and, you know, users are typically connected through a group net, net metering agreement, power purchasing agreement, or other similar agreement or method. Solar energy system footprint shall not be larger than ten acres, so that's something that, like, one of them could be in Swansea, the other one could be in Keene, um, it doesn't really have to be that close by because of the, those agreements that they write up there, the, uh, their purchasing agreements and that. So, that says the footprint shall not be larger than ten acres, and, uh, let's see, smoke it, and that's as a, it's a permitted use in rural ag, special exception on residence, Village One, Business District, Village Business, uh, commercial, industrial allowable use, industrial park allowable use. And we've got it not larger than ten acres, and I'm wondering if we ought to bring that down to like two acres, I know two acres, you can't fit too much on there, but I can see a lot of good land going for the solars where it should be going for houses or, or single-family homes and all that type of stuff there, and, yeah, it's nice to have solar, but it's also nice to have a place to live as well, and I think we ought to start small, I think we ought to bring that down to not larger than two acres, that's still a fair amount, and that's allowed in rural ag, residence, like I said, special exception, residence, special exception, visits, village, Village Business One, Business District, Village Two, special exception, but that would, I don't think they'd ever have it in Village Two, because that's the mill, that's it, it's all you got down there, so, commercial, industrial, permitted use, that, and I think the same goes for commercial solar, that's a use of land that consists of one or more freestanding ground-mounted solar collection systems that has a solar energy system footprint of greater than ten acres and less than twenty-five acres in solar land, uh, in solar land coverage and is designed, uh, designed to service more than the onsite structures. Again, ten acres to twenty-five acres, that's a nice piece of land there, I would say five to ten acres, even that's quite a bit.
I think there's a solar project that we.
Yeah, down here? I don't remember how many acres over there or not, I don't know.
Between five to ten somewhere, I believe, on my recollection.
Fair amount, it was less than, yeah.
Yeah.
Fair amount, I don't know.
So that's, by state standards, it has to be less than ten, so I believe it was eight or nine, it was, it was right, it was close, it wasn't quite.
Oh, okay. And let's see, where's that one allowed? That's, commercial one would be a special exception in rural ag, not allowed in any other zone except commercial, industrial, and industrial park. But again, you know, you put in all this infrastructure for industrial park, you've got the sewer there, the water there, or all these roads, and then you go and use all the land up with, with a solar array, what the heck, you're shooting yourself in the book? I don't know. And even five to ten acres is quite a bit, so, any suggestions on that? They have a ten to twenty-five acres, I say five to ten, or even less, or two to, two to five?
How big was C one for the sewer treatment plant?
I don't know what they covered with that, because they added on to it, I think.
I don't remember how big that was.
I don't remember, there's a small one on the other side, small one, uh, behind, um.
Pump station.
The pump station down there, yeah, it's a small one, so that's not even an acre over there, I don't think. But, yeah, the treated plant one was fairly large.
I think we need, you know, try and get a better handle on the size of those so we can get a better perspective on what, what it, what it is, I mean, like, what if Webb decided, okay, we want to put in a solar, uh, energy producing thing for our plant, for our building down the road, how do we compare what they want, and if we can say. How do we compare what they want, and if we can say they only can have two acres, is that gonna be sufficient to satisfy their needs?
It wouldn't. On two acres of land, you aren't gonna put enough power to, to power most industrial buildings there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm kinda thinking.
And again, that goes to my point of you using all this land for something that might not work that well. And you're, you're taking all this land away from business, from residential, whichever, or even from open space.
Right. And we'll have culture be here.
Yeah.
We, we got that designated for a reason.
And places where, like, the one that went over here, probably not much else is gonna be built over there. A lot of Steven Stolz and stuff over there, so, yeah, fit in there fine. Yeah, but like in industrial park, like you're saying, you put all the. We've done that. Water and sewer. Why we stand with, yeah, ten acres and. Then you mix it up on that, and it can't be used for. Then no other business could go in there. No.
So just point of clarification, I don't, I don't understand this, so I'm looking for answers. We do, so the small-scale enterprise solar, theoretically, couldn't that, if, if we, if a number of larger industrial buildings in town chose to install roof-mounted arrays? Okay, so, you know, if Webb covered its entire roof and any of the other large buildings that we have going in, couldn't that qualify as, for, for that category of small-scale enterprise solar? And I'm asking.
We, we could specifically state on rooftops, because that doesn't, that doesn't really pull that out of it.
I think we're presuming this is gonna be ground-mounted, right?
Well, they kinda have to be, yeah, they were talking about like ten acres and that, you know, we're talking about ground-mounted stuff that's probably.
That was ten acres building.
Yeah, right.
And the other thing, well, CNS, right? CNS wholesale, go first, it's like.
DOT comes to mind.
And, and this is also presuming today's technology, right? Because theoretically, the, the collectors are, I mean, they are, in our lifetimes, they've gotten much more compact. So it could be that less space will be required for arrays over time.
Could be.
Yeah, I've got a question then. I've read along, read some about, as it relates to windmills. Replacement and disposal of those blades is very, very expensive and not easily done.
Why is disposal expensive?
Um, because of material, the materials that they have.
Aren't they aluminum?
No.
What are they?
I don't know. Um, it's not.
Carbon, composite.
But I think those are gonna have to have a different zoning thing for a windmill type of thing, it's not solar, so.
But do, my question is, do solars.
Well, there's a lot of materials in solar.
Same type of disposal issues.
That's the other thing. I've heard that they do, I don't know for a fact, but.
Yeah, I, I don't either, but it's, you know.
Remember that?
Components like cobalt.
Building, you're not looking about getting rid of it.
It's cobalt.
You've gotta consider the end of your day.
Like, one of those ones that we approved, I asked the guy about, when they do, if they recycle, I mean, he said the aluminum frames they do, the, the actual panels themselves, they don't. And that's the, what California's facing right now is, they put all those, yeah, they, they, they don't know what to do with them.
They have cobalt on them.
Which isn't like you could repurpose them or recharge them up to, to use them once they're spent, they're spent and.
I think that was brought up, with the airport one and this one here, was it? He brought it up.
Yeah.
Because there is a material called cobalt in there, which the electric batteries are made out of also, and that has a longer life than the nuclear power plants do with their uranium.
But cobalt is, what, oh yeah, is, is it dangerous, or it might?
Cobalt, cobalt is very dangerous.
It's got.
Very dangerous.
You know, you don't want to eat it, you don't want to ever suffer there.
Yeah, you don't want to eat it, no.
You put it in pottery places.
Yeah, that's a different, that's not cobalt material.
I used a lot of cobalt.
Cobalt's cobalt.
Can we put back the accessory solar?
Yeah.
Okay. If my neighbor puts out a solar in his yard, and it looks like hell.
Show me good looking.
Then, you know, and then the neighbor next to him complains, or is not happy with it. Where do, where do we go? What do we do? How, how are we going to regulate what, what, and where these can be put?
Now, now we're talking about regulating aesthetics. Because if I wanna paint my house purple, and your next door, you say you don't like purple.
But he's talking about structure.
Some of those areas.
But it's the structure what you're talking about. It's not like he's painting a house, it's a structure you're putting up, either in your backyard or out in your field or something like that.
It's kinda like the days of the huge satellite dishes, right, when people used to put them. I mean, it's, it's similar in how it affects your.
They probably weren't gonna make you screen them, because that's the whole idea, is to get light into the things there, so you really screen too much around those things.
I guess the only way you can handle that is to have setbacks like we do on other things. If they're putting it in next to another house or another building, you have a setback so that it doesn't have an interference with that next property.
Uh, you know, the setbacks are there, and you probably have to abide by the existing setbacks in there for any other structure you put on there, you know.
Is a.
Single solar out for that, but.
Is a solar array a structure by definition?
I think it's considered a structure.
By definition, the code, I don't know.
I don't think we have it in ours, but I do believe it would be considered a structure. And, you know, getting back to your point there, then maybe the way to do it is to regulate the size then, of what someone would put in their yard.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if the property is, doesn't exceed a certain acreage or half acre or whatever, then we should require it to be roof-mounted, so it's not on the ground. I, you know, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I see, yeah, you could.
But then you have to get into the fact that roof-mounted ones sometimes don't, are not able to meet the needs that the people have, because their roofs are not large enough, or there's not enough exposure to the sun. Uh, that's, that's kind of an issue too.
Well, it could be, then if that's the case, that their roof won't do it, you could have it in there that, uh, if they wanted to put one on the ground there, then they couldn't see the square footage that their roof was. Since they can't put it on the roof, but it'd have to be the same size as that, you know, in their backyard.
Well, I can see putting a, a size thing there, depending on the house, so it doesn't, especially in a village here where you don't have lots of room. I could put one in and nobody could complain, because the way my land is, how much I got.
Nobody see it, yeah.
But, yeah, but down here in the village, it could be an issue.
Well, then maybe, you're right, it's a lot size, like, lots less than an acre or something has to be on the roof.
One question that I have is, given the snow that we're capable of then, the weight loads of the roofs, trust us. When you throw a structure on top of it, and then the snow.
Yeah.
What are your, what are your weight loads?
Well, yeah, that's where you, that's where your construction engineer's gonna have to look at, your, your weight load now that your roof can handle, then add in the weight of that thing you're putting up there. And if it's, and that's the other issue, if you're down here in a village, and you got some of these older homes, that may not fit on the roof, because they'd have to do extensive additions to the roof, beef it up a little bit, so it could hold that weight along. Because, you know, roofs are put on according to the snow weight that you expect in the area.
Yeah.
Am I correct about that? That, that would be an issue, that has to be able to handle it. Because then you're getting into a safety issue.
Talking about, you know, the roof, the roof mounting, you've gotta consider weight, right?
That'll be handled in the, in the building codes though. The planning board doesn't usually, and the planning board adopts the building codes, but the planning board doesn't really amend them or make any.
No, but you're saying, while we're.
Yeah, it's something to consider, absolutely, you have something to consider, that, you know, weight loads, snow load.
I was trying to agree with you.
Yeah, we, I believe we, we do the New Hampshire building call, and New Hampshire does the national. Am I correct on that, Julius?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the town adopts, the town adopts it as well.
Right.
A lot of the solar buildings have slate roofs too, which are not light.
Yeah, that's true. Metal roofs are actually metal roofs.
So.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so the question really that I have for the board on this matter is, so I've kinda pulled this directly from, you know, Matthew, Matthew drafted this initially, he gave it to Sarah. Sarah kinda passed it along to me, and so I met it up with it. But they ended up pulling a lot of this information from other communities, pulling it from King, Peterborough, pulling it from, from previous towns I've worked in. And so the question is ultimately, if we are gonna have a solar ordinance, how would we want, like, to regulate it for a particular use? Like, I'm thinking residential uses, the way it's drafted currently, it's very, a very, very neat back. Essentially, as long as it's within your setbacks, because it is a structure, it's allowable, either on the ground or on the roof. If the board doesn't wanna do that, then we can look at making some amendments to that portion. And you'll notice that as you go up an acreage, and even, kind of a personal flaw that I see within, is that the acreage doesn't really express what, what is calculated in that? Because you have the arrays themselves that are lifted off the ground, isn't, you know, how do you calculate a total acreage of the solar array? That's kind of been one of the other questions I think we should have answered in particular.
How much drawn with that array, you'd have to do the square feet, then you could figure if it's, that you'd have to do.
I think we'd want, we'd want to define that. But also, it's, you'll notice on, on the bottom here, it's very, it's extremely restricted going forward, or up the acreage list. It seems to be that, that's what the planning board wants. So that's kinda why I pull a little bit of late in the game, I guess, and might come aboard, at least beginning this discussion and seeing ultimately what other things. If we wanna restrict accessories more, I think to some degree this also is very conducive to accessories, uh, solar arrays on businesses as well. We talked about FWM. With how this is written right now, as long as the energy being produced from the solar array solely benefits FWM in that scenario, then it was not received reviewed, it's simply a permitted use. So, again, thinking about that. Is that something we want to see? Yes or no? Yeah, just, I just wanted to throw those couple ideas at the board.
And on the, on the roof, that's really not a problem. I mean, the roof is there, it's gonna be there regardless of whether you got solar panels on it or not. It's not a separate structure that you're putting around the building or. So I would think that that would be an allowable use by rights. We had that one company there a while back that came in for that, remember? Because there was a question whether they had to come in here to put rooftop solar panels, I don't remember if it was Waste Management or.
Easy Creek was.
Or was it, no, Avtech building there? It was one of those two, or if not, those. Easy Creek.
Yeah.
These, these days are about roof-mounted arrays flush to the roof, or are they still doing the angled?
You see both.
Yeah.
Yeah, both. And it's, that's a good point, because it also, whenever this went before the Conservation Commission, the idea was to actually allow the structure, the physical solar array to go above the height restriction. The forty-five. But the plan, uh, sorry, the Conservation Commission actually asked to have that removed. So this would follow height restrictions currently.
Something like Webb would have to get FAA approval to, because of that point, uh.
I think we, other considerations like.
Industrial park.
Might be another consideration like Blair. Yeah, I think we ought to probably just table it and think about it.
Sure.
Until our next meeting and come up with something about it, and just an ongoing thing. We may not get this into our zoning this year, it's not the end of the world if we don't, but at least we're thinking about it.
They would, uh, they'd like T-Bird, Cross, and Duckton, and most Swansea was talking about that.
So if I may also include something here, you'll notice that on the solar ordinance, I, I use the, what's called table of permitted uses, it's that little chart that has the Xs and the Ps and the Ss.
Yep, definitely.
Is that something the board wants to see, or do you want me to nix it and pull it out? Because I like that.
Well, that lays it out good.
Hey, you always say that, true.
As long as the, whatever the board's having.
Move them around, or I better change them, but the, the table itself is a good layout.
Perfect, that's, just wanted to make sure the board's happy.
You've got P and E S C at the bottom. The X is not proven, not.
Not committed.
No, yeah. I guess I could exploit that too.
I think it is, isn't it? Didn't you have it on the back? Yeah, X is used, right there, prohibited. It's just on the next page, yeah, but it's there, it's there.
We're trying to get you to do that for years.
As long as everybody's happy with that design, obviously they could fit the ordinance if this is to go in.
Yeah, so, no changes yet to it. Board's gonna think about it, and we'll discuss it at prior meetings. It can just be a, a discussion item on a little bunch of meetings, so we can talk about it when we have time.
So can you include the accessory solar as site plan review, so that we?
We can if it goes on a residential unit. I mean, we can if it goes on a commercial, which I think it is covered in here. If it is on a commercial building, then it does come to the site plan. But if it goes on a house, it, it doesn't, it can't, because we do not have that.
Yeah, they just go to Mike, get a billing permit for the resident.
But if it's in the zoning, they have to adhere to the zoning, it's just that they don't have to go to site plan review.
Okay, so there's no way we're protecting them?
We are if we put a, a, a square footage restriction off, then, and that's in the, and if it's passed by the voters, then that's in the zoning, and then when you get the permit from Mike, you know, you don't go to site plan review, but Mike gives you the permit and says, you know, you can only put in whatever the heck it is you can put in. And it can only be on the roof and not on the ground, whatever, however, it's, it's in the zoning.
State law is very clear that you cannot require site plan at all on a residential space, as long as it's conducive to solar that residential use.
That's right.
If it were a subdivision, if we ever got a subdivision again?
Well, so depends, so.
If it was part of a subdivision, I mean, if they had a subdivision and they had this area designated as solar, then yeah, site plan is in there.
But if it was each, if there was an array for each law, then it would not be our business?
But it depends, if we had it in our zoning on residential, and it has to be on the roof for residential, that may cover that as well though, because it's a residential use in a subdivision. But if they had a lot specifically stated that this is gonna run this community, then it's like.
Did you get all that, David?
So let's think about that for a while there. Let's see, plan reading workshop, we'll cross that off. Letter of support, master grant, what's that all about?
Yeah, so, we did this last year, Menadon Alliance for Sustainable Transportation. Typically, they like to have letters of support from some elected bodies within the community. This left board has already put one together. I drafted the letter, very similar, same way we did it last year. I think last year's project was for Swansea Central, for the sidewalk project, that sounds, if it sounds right for you guys. And for this project, what we're applying for is California Street and North Winchester.
Oh, that, you didn't get funds for that before?
So we had a, you mean California and North Winchester, or?
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, so we had applied for a number of other grants, I know Sarah had, and she did not, was it N D R C? I might be wrong on the titles, but she had applied for grants for that one already, and did not receive those.
Oh, okay, oh, that's happened there. So we're looking again.
Yeah, essentially finding alternative sources.
It sounds like what we ought to be doing there. The Dear Menadon Alliance for.
Did we have a quote in for West Street and the lens farm mode yet?
Please accept this letter of support from the Swansea Planning Board in favor of the Menadon Region Complete Streets Implementation Grant being submitted by the Town of Swansea to the Menadon Alliance for Sustainable Transportation. There's a mouthful right there, boy. The proposed project would include the construction of a new sidewalk on California and North Winchester Street. This proposed project will create a safer form of travel for pedestrians and bicyclists traveling in and around historic West Swansea. The planning board has recently updated the town's master plan, the transportation chartering includes an objective, let me not, objective of providing for safe passage for cyclists and pedestrians. One of the actions identified for implementing this objective is to determine options for areas that need improvements for walkability, including the area around Butler School and West Swansea. The proposed project will allow the town to further complete Objective Two of Swansea's master plan. In closing, the planning board strongly supports this grant application and believes the project will provide for improved pedestrian and cyclist safety within the community. Happy for your time and consideration. Sincerely.
The California State that's attacking is definitely like the bridge.
It's from the intersection on.
Of Old Town.
Yeah.
Is there anything in there about widening that road a bit?
Well, that's, I was just gonna get to that. If, if we get this grant and take money for the, whatever the heck it is, the complete streets there for that, then it has to have a sidewalk on it. And the only way to widen that street pretty much is to take either some or all of that sidewalk, and that street does need widening there. So that could be a problem, you know, we'll never get that street widened if we do accept the money for that, because it has to include the sidewalks because of big streets. If we don't, then the town can do it themselves, raise the money themselves, obviously, but widen that area there, that's California.
You couldn't take away the sidewalk that's there and improve the street and the sidewalk?
It only goes a short distance after you walk.
The property lines are so close there. We walked that last year, I think, one time anyways, but the.
I know how a wide.
It's so narrow there, you could, we. You could, we looked at it and you could take some of the, as you turn up by the old Nick's Restaurant there, go, go straight up there. On that right-hand side, the, the road sort of curves a little bit by Ann Bedard's house there. And you could cut some of that straight, because Nick of Frakis' property is right in there by that telephone pole. You could cut some of that straight and widen that part of the area there. And as you got further down, you could go to the left as the houses are down there because the yards are a little bit bigger on the left-hand side and widen it down in there. But still, it was gonna be pretty close up to where Sal's house is, right? Right in that area, right at the top of that hill right there, right in there.
When you meet a car, you almost have to drive on the side.
You almost have to.
If you come this way.
Welcome to my world.
There, there are probably people that use that sidewalk. And I use sidewalks a lot, and I've never seen anybody use that sidewalk. When we were up there.
Don't dare.
Yeah, but, but a lot of cars use that road right there.
Oh, leave it bold.
In my opinion, it would be, benefit the town better to widen that street and take that sidewalk out, and it would be to put the sidewalk back in.
When we approve any new construction, can we mandate that they put in a sidewalk in conjunction with that construction?
We do that, you know, we can and do. We have developers put in sidewalks for different, um, projects. We had them put a sidewalk that pretty much went to nowhere when we did that river bend one down there. You know, they came and then it just stopped.
Great sidewalk games.
But it, it extends now because they, they did the, uh, South Winchester Street.
Yeah, they'll, 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 they'll do anything as long as you get, get paid for it.
Every, every sidewalk that we can get somebody else to pay for. It's a sidewalk we don't have to build.
Why is it that it's specific, specifically for California Street?
It's for California and North Winchester.
Right.
It's both of them, right. But yeah, i- if you cross California Street out there, it'd be just for North Winchester Street.
It costs a million dollars to pave a street there per mile.
Well, I, I don't care how much you cost, that's not what I'm asking you. I, I just wonder why this money is specified for California Street? Why?
Because the town has, uh, Joe Russo, it's the D B D Director, right? He's the one that rates the roads and what condition they're in and what needs attention first.
I've been on the C I P committee for at least three years, Michael, I know that.
Yeah, but that's.
But here's the thing. Um, they talked about making California Street one-way or the other.
Yeah, that was tough.
What happened to that idea? If there's no room to widen it, then why are we applying for money to, for a sidewalk on a street where we can't put a sidewalk?
Well, you can, the sidewalk is there.
I know.
I would imagine they're talking about putting it back in the same exact spot.
Why?
My question.
There's not room for it now.
I know, you're right.
I guess what I'm saying is this doesn't make any sense and I need to go home and have.
That's what he's saying is if we apply for the state for money for that sidewalk, that that sidewalk has to go in there hands down.
Yeah, right.
Stipulation. And that road has to stay narrow. And that road has to stay narrow.
I'd vote no for the sidewalk.
I would too.
Same here.
Because again, how many people walk on that road?
Go ahead.
The one person. There was the, the, the trust for the town of West Swansea.
No, it was.
No, their sidewalk. Why are they going to the state if the trust is there to provide for sidewalk?
Because they're trying to redo the road also.
Well, I think just because it's available there. The, the, the complete streets, people are pushing for the complete streets. You know, they want bicycle paths and all the stuff on the street there. So a way to do it is to take our money and then give it back to us with a bribe saying, okay, we'll give you your money back to you, but you gotta do this. You gotta make your streets that way. Basically, that's what they're doing.
That's where government works out.
I wouldn't wanna ride my bicycle over California.
No, I wouldn't either. That's, that's a lot of traffic on that street.
There is.
Can, can we petition, um, the selectmen to change that? Or go about somehow changing it to a one-way street? Therefore allowing the sidewalks and bicycles.
Nobody liked it, nobody, the residents.
They have a.
I didn't like the idea either.
I don't either.
You are gonna get people, people are still gonna try and go the wrong way on one-way street. And they wanted to make North Winchester Street a one-way as well, I think it was.
The survey?
Those to come in the other way.
I told that traveler, never a single day, you know?
Yeah, there was, there's more traffic on, on that, um, California than there is on Winchester Street. When we walked it that day, there, there are cars all the time on that California Street and Winchester.
I wonder if that'll turn though, once they pave Winchester Street. Now, does that grant address just the short park here or does it stand the other side in the road, Route Ten?
Just the short one to Route Ten, that's all it is, yeah. So, yeah, the, the sidewalks would fit fine on North Winchester Street. Plenty of room there for that. And they could extend it up to, I don't know, a couple more houses up there, I suppose they could, but in my opinion too, I, that street is narrow. I'd rather see a wider street than a sidewalk on that street up there.
So I also think we should also consider the idea that that section of Route Ten as well had also received some level of alterations in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Which will include some of the pedestrian crossings. So if we're gonna add those pedestrian crossings along the state and then we don't add it here in.
I think, I think we put three pedestrian crossings on Route Ten, California Street, West Street, and down by Camaro's. I think that's what we put on.
Yeah, and, and just to note that you guys might be interested in being aware of that E D A would like to see California Street be an entrance to West Swansea. So they would have, you know, this way to Wickham Hall, this way to the B and B, you know, to, in, in foster tourism and so forth. So they would like to see California Street actually become Main Street.
Always the Route Ten, oh yeah, from the bridge, Route Ten.
Yeah, because when you give directions, you tell them to take a left on it.
People don't know necessarily if they're on Route Ten, how to get down to Wickham Hall.
No, that's very true. Because I remember a friend of mine had art in the display and her friends were looking all day for Wickham Hall when, when they had their first art show.
Yeah.
They could have found it, but Wickham Hall could have a sign out there from the state, one of those blue signs that says Wickham Hall, let's wait. If they pay four hundred dollars a year for X number of years, I think it is. E D A. That's just one wedding for quite a lot. Is, is it?
Historic signs?
Huh?
The brown historic signs?
I don't know, I looked it up once, but that was years ago. It might be more now, I don't know.
Probably won't be less.
Nothing will ever be that.
If they did want to put that, that's, that's a sign out Route Ten showing how to get to Wickham Hall. That would, to me, help facilitate changing that to one-way.
Just in, yeah, because the sign is on there.
If you wanna, if you wanna leave, you have, is it, it used to go in front of Nick's restaurant? Is that North Winchester?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. That gets you out to Route Ten.
You know how sucky it is to try and pull.
I understand. There's that.
If they wanna, I hate that area. I would fight it tooth and nail to turn that into a one-way. And I'm, I know I'm not the only one in this town. I know a shit ton of people.
Which is, which intersection should just be closed period.
Yeah. Well, what are we gonna do here? The Planning Board could make a recommendation that California Street be left out of this grant. And the reasoning would be that it would be more beneficial to the town for a wider street there than it would be to be forced into putting a sidewalk there. I mean, that's the reasoning behind it. Whether we do it or not, yeah, we'd have to spend town funds to do it, but it would benefit the town. A lot of people use that street back and forth there.
Does that violate the trust? We take the sidewalks out?
I don't think so. The sidewalk trust is there to maintain them. I don't think it says you can't remove them. I haven't read it, but I wouldn't think that.
Sidewalks.
Yeah, they might not, if you maintain them, unfortunately you don't remove them.
Yes, who knows?
Did that snow?
I was in Florida. I'm in Florida for.
The understanding I had was that Snow left that money to put in sidewalks all throughout the town.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
Of West Swansea.
Of West Swansea, yeah.
And there's a sidewalk committee that is supervises, right? And it's all for this, your street.
So if we sign this letter here recommending it, or if we don't sign it recommending, recommending the, uh, the grant money, the other departments are, selectmen probably, and I don't know who else would be signing one of these, they're, probably would have California Street on there. So it's still probably gonna go through looking for California Street, but the Planning Board doesn't have to agree with it if the Planning Board doesn't think it's good planning to do that. I don't think it is good planning to do that. I think it should be Main Street, all of those out there. So we can either cross out the California Street part of it and sign the letter or we don't sign it at all. Or I, I'm the one who's supposed to sign it, but.
You could check that on the line, right?
We could, we can put conditions on it like we do the site plan.
Sure.
Better than that.
We've signed this letter, but here are the conditions. So can you cross out California Street and then add a note at the bottom that says, would the condition that this remain crossed out? Well, I'll tell you, Julius could write up another one that leaves out California Street. So if the Planning Board wants to do that, we can vote to do that and then I can just sign it in Julius's office later on and we can go from there. Let's go. And this is, the planning board will made its point.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay. I'll second. A motion by Richard to have Julius redo the letter and leave California Street out of the grant, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
We better off not sending any letter than ruffling feathers and trying to omit California.
No rust and feathers. We don't care, I mean, ruffling feathers, that's no, that's not a concern to us. We do it all the time.
We just don't want to.
We see some of the people in these meetings here, yeah. So.
We want to.
No, I think we ought to send a letter in because, yeah, Winchester Street, that's a nice long street there and you've got plenty of room for sidewalks there and they can redo, redo that and use the money on that.
Makes sense.
And going down the street, you're gonna lose your car.
And can, yeah, this, we strongly suggest the other, the board, selectmen.
We'll let them make their own decision. We've made a statement, if we do it this way, that's our statement, that's the planning board's position, and they can read into it whatever they wanna read into it. So that's the motion, seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, would you do that for us, Julius?
Well, then I'll just, I'll come over to you.
Okay. Uh, I think that's it. Any other business?
Um, just wanted, Julius, did you check into that Route Thirty-two project that we talked about the other day? Everybody knows that we're on the board. We approved a, uh, apartment building right by the new fire station. And they're coming up, I think, next month.
Yes.
Where they have to have something done. They have started cutting trees and putting more brush up. So they have to make some kind of progress before we can give them an extension.
Yeah, so that's exactly correct. Much like we talked about the substantial development, uh, earl- earlier in this meeting, their deadline after their second extent, or their first extension, for making it two years, is coming up in the early November. I have to get the exact date, I don't know if it's.
Fourth or fifth or something.
I was looking seventh, but maybe, you might be right. So e- so either way, that, that deadline is coming up. And so once that deadline meets, if they have not reached that substantial development on that particular lot, whatever the board determines that to be, it'll be on that agenda for the first, uh, meeting in November. So just be prepared if that's gonna be the case. We'll have to look at what has been done currently, if it meets those requirements. If it does, then they're authorized to continue. If they're not, then that means they have to come back for a new site plan application. And the concern we're doing that for this particular property is that it'd have to go underneath the new regulations. And the proposal as it exists currently does not match the current regulations. So just.
So are they aware of their pending deadline?
They are.
And are they submitting an extension?
They can do another extension, because remember, you're only allowed one extension.
Oh, they've had an extension on that already?
They have.
So they have to have substantial progress. And right now, what I've seen there going by just today, a few trees cut down and a bunch of brush piled up around. That's it.
Well, they cleaned out pretty much everything.
Oh, yeah, but it's just on piles up, but that's not really, in my mind.
Yeah, we can't really discuss that too much. We're gonna have a, we're gonna have to discuss that substantial, uh, development or completion if and when they come in, so we can't discuss it now.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to have a point of view. I have a question for new business. I often go out and look at properties before we come to the meetings. And in a lot of instances, they're trees. And I've been trying to figure out, okay, where among these trees are we talking about? Can we get a sign subject to zoning board approval or planning board approval? You know, proposed development, hearing date? So that when I'm driving past trees, I know which trees I'm looking at?
I think you lost me for a minute there, just back up a bit. And I think what you're saying is that the lots that are being proposed, that we have a site plan in front of us or are coming in front of us, that it be posted. This is where such and such is going to be.
Right.
Something like that.
Right.
I don't think so. Well, I don't know, it's the board, to me, I don't know, it's, it's still, yeah.
I've seen that in other states, I've seen that in.
It's tough to visualize sometimes on that.
It's just like a, a long Sunday stick up front.
But the planning board is free to do a sidewalk like we do on certain times. You know, you know where the lot is, you're confused about where it's going, then you have a sidewalk and you have them to point out, well, that's going here, that's going there, 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 there. I like doing it that way, you're right on sight. I don't, a sign, yeah, I can tell you that this is going in here or, you know, this is the corner of whichever.
Yeah, you're telling me where the site is, but he's not gonna tell you what this calls and that calls.
No, the sidewalk is for that, Jane.
Um, what he's saying brings to mind something I talked to Julius about this week. Because online, on the Swansea Community page, some people were saying, why, what are they doing? They're going to build something on the fire department land over on Thirty-two and they went out. And it went on forever and there were some nasty things said about the planning board. Did you all see that?
They just do what we want.
Yeah, and the planning board doesn't care what you think. They just go on and do what they wanna do anyway. And I'm looking at this empty room, you know, and thinking, well. So I said to Julius, I wish we could, I don't know if we can, maybe if you've got a truck like they used to do in the old days for candidates and they drove up and down the street. Public hearing on Thursday, be there or be square, you know?
Maybe you ought to get an ice cream truck and drive up and down those places.
Ding, 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 right?
Come to the planning board meeting.
They won't come, they don't come to the meetings, but it would be great to have, uh, uh, community education roundtable and have a, someone who volunteers from this committee, not me, to be on the roundtable, like Scott would be valuable. We could have a couple people and, and have someone from zoning. And, you know, everything in the town and then have it here and have them up on the stage and, and insist that people come or your taxes go up by one percent. I don't know how else you'll get them in here.
What I'm doing, Jane, is you didn't go to our last town meeting and Dan and a couple brought up the fact they, oh, we didn't know that was going. And so what I'm doing is I'm gonna take the package there and I'm gonna put it. This is what's coming, folks. If you've got a problem, you come and talk to the planning board during that session.
Yeah.
If not, I don't wanna hear it.
It's just, it's awful. And and to be on the Planning Board as long as somebody like Scott and I have been and have people say, it doesn't make any difference. They just do whatever they think is right anyway. And somebody said that that knows me, and and I'm gonna get their ear. But another thing that's been bothering me that has nothing to do with any of that, and before I forget it, because I'm kinda like a squirrel, I'll go on to another one. It is all these signs. Now, there are rules for these signs that people are sticking along the road everywhere too, and you can't leave them out there all the time until the snow covers them.
Political signs?
No, not, well, political signs, I know about those. You've gotta get them in, and I always took.
Karate, like, so I think karate signs?
Yeah, but other things to say, yeah, karate, come worship with us, um, this person, you know, or or some of the shops that opened new, and they put them out, and then you've got all these little signs all up and down the road. They look terrible. They look terrible. People coming to Keene from Massachusetts come up Route Ten. I have friends that live in other places. Believe it or not, most of my friends do live in other places. But when you come into town and see all those signs, it makes our town look crappy, just to be honest. And I I don't think they should be allowed to leave them out. If I open this store and I wanna put a sign out that this store is open and this is what it is, that's great. But then after, and there is a limit. It tells you in our rules that those signs should be taken in. Then another thing I've had people mention to me, more than I'm mentioning, those big old signs that look like part of a flag, and there's one now, I think it's over by the Marlos', and you can hardly see around it to pull out when you're coming out of there.
That one way entrance blocks the view.
It's kinda leaning, you know?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. What if they were to put like a free beer tomorrow sign out there and just permanently leave it?
Free beer tomorrow?
Yeah.
Well, they have to take it down after tomorrow, but that's not every tomorrow.
Well, again, I I agree with that, yeah. The the rules are the rules, and you aren't supposed to have those signs on. I've seen off premise signs, you know, we don't allow it also, but again, the Planning Board is not enforcement.
No, I know it isn't, but.
We can discuss it, but.
But we talked about our master plan, and we, and our master plan is set up to try to guide us to a good community, and when people come in, we want them to come to Swansea, but we don't want them to come to Swansea and make it look.
No, and the Planning Board, Planning Board's job is to make the regulations to prevent that, which we have done, but that's where it stops. The Planning Board, you know, they can't knock on someone's door and say, hey, I'm from the Planning Board. You better take that sign now. That's not us.
No, no, I'm not going to.
Code enforcement is for that.
But I might go by and say, you know, there's a law against having a sign.
You could run it over accidentally.
I don't want scratch marks.
Use your husband's car.
That's an idea. It's lower than mine, too, really.
I guess you don't remember the burner, should you?
Yeah, dude. That's how I learned to read.
Okay, anything else? Other business before we have an adjournment?
I moved me adjourned.
Also, to adjourn, like, seconded by Brandon, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.